Flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, in the justal, liberty, and justice for all.
Pastor Clark, the caller roll.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus, absent. Counselor Haddelberg.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Seven members present, you have a quorum.
First order of business.
Public speaking.
Anyone here for public speaking? I'll ask again, anyone here for public speaking, seeing none will close net portion of the meeting.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Calvin Brown moves to accept and file the minutes under suspension, see no objections, so moved.
Now we move on to communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding community recreation advisory board appointment. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the community recreation advisory board, Ms. Farrah McCormick of Chelsea, for the recently vacated term expiring February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. McCormick is a proud Chelsea resident and is currently a quality systems specialist at HP Hood. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, copies of her cover letter and resume are attached.
Counselor Taylor moves to a second reading, seeing that there's no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding Chelsea historical commission appointments. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea cultural council, Ms. Michelle Mirthis of Chelsea, for the recently vacated three-year term expiring November seventh, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Mirthis is a Chelsea native and resident and is currently a mass health canvas team leader through La Collaborativa. Copies of her cover letter and resume are attached. I'm also recommending the reappointment of Ms. Allison Shepherd of Chelsea for an additional term expiring.
If you can ask for a, if you can ask for a roll call vote, actually, they have a meeting this week, and in order to have a quorum, they need these members. If there's no objections from, from anybody.
No objection, I guess.
Yeah.
There's no objection actually for roll call.
All right.
I know it's normally with practice we act as second reading, so that's why.
Yes.
It's a clear picture, so thank you.
But actually, we're gonna have a roll call on the adoption.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
The members in favor, the appointments are approved.
Approved. Next order.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval for departments to pay prior year expenses. Dear counselors, I am writing to request approval for various city departments to make payments of prior year expenses from their respective FY twenty-four budgets. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. When such instances occur, the city council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Currently, as part of our fiscal year close, we have identified several outstanding prior year city obligations that total twelve thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. In each case, the respective department has sufficient funds to meet the outstanding obligation. No new funds are required. The only action necessary is council approval to make the payments, a copy of the recommended order is attached.
Counselor Haddelberg moves to second reading under suspension, see no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the community preservation committee, Ms. Myra Molina de Romero of Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring November thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Molina is the owner and vice president of the beloved Chelsea restaurant, Elisea Salvadorena. She is also currently a member of Community Dades and Rias, Community Land Trust, and has an extensive background in community-based work in Chelsea. Also, for the community preservation committee, I am recommending Ms. Juana Lourdes Perez Vasquez of Chelsea to complete the unexpired term of Ms. Yaha Nor, who resigned. This term expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Perez Vasquez has been a Chelsea resident for over ten years and has an interest in learning more about affordable housing initiatives in Chelsea. Lastly, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the community recreation board, Ms. Kim Hofer of Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring November thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Hofer is a Chelsea resident and a former athletics coach and employee of Chelsea Public Schools. She has a deep interest in the recreational opportunities Chelsea has to offer. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments.
Counselor Brown moves to a second reading, seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding FY twenty-four park grant, two twelve Congress Avenue Neighborhood Park Project. Dear counselors, I am writing to you with an update on the city's park grant submission for the development of a new public park situated at two twelve Congress.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg. Something coming up on the new business. Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding intermunicipal agreement with Everett for the Island and River Flood Resilience Project. Dear counselors, I am writing to you with an update on the city's Island and River Flood Resilience Project and our continuing partnership with Everett to complete this important work. As you may know, the city has secured a local pre-disaster mitigation grant from the Massachusetts.
Counselor Haddelberg. Something coming up on the new business. Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding supplemental funding for new park construction at eighty-eight Clinton Street. Dear counselors, I am writing to you with an update on the city's work to build a new park at eighty-eight Clinton Street and request that the city council approve the necessary funding for this project.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to waive the reading, it'll be something, except and file a communication, some will be coming up on the new business.
Next, we move on to communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from city solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher. Dear counselors, as you may recall, the city recently amended its zoning ordinances so that gas stations throughout the city may also operate convenience stores. The planning board, zoning board of appeals, and the city administration supported this change. Since the change, we have not been able to allow the use of a convenience store or the sale of food at locations selling or storage gasoline because the building inspector is bound to enforce our ordinances. Section fourteen dash two of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances specifically prohibits the sale and consumption of food near gasoline. I recommend that section fourteen dash two of the city's Code of Ordinances be repealed. Thank you for your consideration in advance.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to accept and file a communication, something will be coming up on the new business.
Next, we move on to committee reports. We have a copy of a committee report received from the Chelsea City Council Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah. Move to accept the recommendations of the subcommittee by roll call vote.
Anybody want to speak on it? Counselor Taylor.
So, we met to kind of update the, the rules and regulations for city council, and, you know, I must say that most of the, most of the changes were, were fairly superficial, and others were, you know, basically to tighten down what the rules are for speaking and things about personal privileges, section two on the recusal of members, and we added a measure to enable this, to codify the right of this body to censure one of its own members. We also locked down the standing, standing committees, and also we also codified the legislative code. So, that will be moved to, that will be moved to a subcommittee on conference and for further, further debate on that, but everybody got the changes, so if there's any questions.
I'm asking for clarification, the vote, I believe we're voting to accept the committee report to adopt rules and regulations and to refer the code to committee on.
Correct.
Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Seven in favor, the committee report and recommendations are adopted. Next, unfinished business.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Sure. So, here I would move that we take up the order introduced by Counsel Robinson and adopt it as amended, I'll speak on it briefly.
Yes.
All we're doing here is making an amendment. We have something we voted on back in June. We took the account numbers that were provided to us, but two of the account numbers were incorrect, so we're simply gonna replace forty-nine oh four with forty-nine hundred, forty-nine oh four, which was a repeated typo, with forty-nine oh one. That way, the audit department can allow us to spend the funds that we thought we were spending.
Any other speakers, seeing none, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Members present, order is adopted as amended. We move on to second readings. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from operating stabilization fund seven zero two-three to supplement fiscal year CIP twenty twenty-four emergency management department, emergency housing shelter operations account.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to roll call on the adoption, see no objections. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg. Counselor Vega is absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Seven members in favor, order is adopted. Next, we have another order introduced by Council President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three were not paid and are owed to the vendors, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from current year FY twenty-four budgets, respectfully as noted, that the city council authorize the following expenditures to satisfy the unpaid balances from prior years.
Counsel Haddelberg moves for a roll call vote on the adoption, there are no objections, seeing none, the clerk will call a roll. Anyone to speak on the matter? Seeing none, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, what is that?
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg. Counselor Vega is absent. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Other members in favor, order is adopted. Next, we move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the city manager and DPW commissioner ensure construction equipment used by the city and contractors are stored better.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero.
Adopt under suspension, there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Seems to be a lot of problems with this because in our city, it's small, and there's no way to park, so they leave these pieces of wood and all kinds of stuff in the ground for a long time, which I believe a few years back, me and Counselor Lopez did something about that, I think when GTA was there on Maverick Street, they ended up leaving boards all over and kids were playing and they were getting hurt. So, I don't know why they storing woods and all this other stuff. I think there was something, I'm not sure, that they have to move their equipment, they have wheels have to be moved, they cannot be stored. Because I, like I said before, our city is very small. If you take away the parking of the people, what are you creating? You're creating a worse problem than exist. Maybe, I don't know why the city doesn't tell them to move them, I don't know, does it cost city money? If the city told these people to move it, would the city have to pay, would it store their equipment? Is that why they doing that? I don't understand why it's being done, but I believe that the people of this city deserve better than having all this equipment all over the place and they can't park. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lopez.
Yes, I also noticed that, that every time a construction company come to the city of Chelsea and do sidewalks or the streets, or whatever it is, they always leave stuff like cement and all kind of debris there, and sometimes they block the sidewalk. I see in other cities, they don't do that, it's only in Chelsea. I don't know why, and we have a lot of elderly people, and when they use the streets, not only we already have a lot of traffic, when they stretch the street is, you know, it's really tough for us to drive around, so I think it's a good idea to implement that and to have these contractors move their stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the city manager and DPW commissioner order construction contractors and utility companies to fully repair streets after their work is complete.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. Seeing no objection, you have the floor, Counselor.
For many years, for a few years, I've been saying with these construction companies, the city spends millions of dollars in fixing, and utility companies fixing the roads. As soon as the road looks so pretty, the next thing you know, they dig it up and it looks like holes and everything. So, I think there's something within our city that says that, I don't know if DPW has it, but I think DPW, somebody's supposed to go to these utility companies and make them bring it back the way it was done before, but it's not being done. What they doing is they digging it up, they making all holes, and then when they patch it up, they pull little patches, as a, within a month or two, you get big indentation and you can't go over it. So, we'd like to know exactly if we do have someone that makes sure that the streets go back the way they were done before.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the traffic and parking commission look into placing a stop sign at the intersection of Pearl Street and Essex Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
I put this before, I came before to the parking and traffic commission and they deny it. I don't understand why they deny it, maybe because they don't live in that area and they don't know what the people go through. Live in that area for a little while and see how hard it is to go to where you live, especially in that side, because once they start coming off the bridge and it gets a big blob, everything gets clogged all near Kershon and Repollo Campedewas, people don't stop between the roads. They just go one after the other, they think they're gonna go any faster, which they don't go any faster. So, it's hard for you to get to your own street. I live on that street, and I can't get into it. Many times, I have to wait on the other side because the street is all blocked. I, and before, they said, the parking and traffic commission, if I remember correctly what they said, they said, they were gonna put some type of, something on the ground to tell them, but they never did it. So, if we tell the parking and traffic commission to do something and they do not do it, what is the point of putting any orders? They're the ones that said, we're not gonna put a traffic sign, okay. I don't want the traffic sign for myself. When I put it in to put a stop sign, I put it for the people, that means they're asking me because they're having a hard time. I don't get pleasure out of saying, well, put the sign. I do it because people want it, so if people want it, it should be respected, and it should say, okay, go there and you live there. Go there in traffic, peep traffic, I mean, try to go up, up Essex Street, you just try and see what happens to you, and then you'll understand. If you don't live there and you don't see how hard it is, Essex Street is a one-way street, you can't go up there. If you're going from the mullahs and you wanna go home, it's the only way to go, you gotta go up that street. Otherwise, you gotta go all the way down the bottom, and then you're in the same boat, worse, because you got lights and you gotta go down. So, I don't, I can't understand why they don't wanna put a sign there. They have one on the other side. Why? Because it's two-way street? You're only putting it on one side, you're not putting it both sides, you're not telling them to stop going to East Boston, you're telling them to stop right at that corner. So, I want to know again to them, what is the reasoning behind it? All over again, that's the whole thing. Make sure that they do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the traffic and parking commission remove the bike lane on Third Street near Chestnut Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero.
Adopt under suspension again, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Last time, we adopted under suspension to have that done. I found out the city doesn't have, all of it is not a bike lane. The whole city interrupts, and parts of it are bike lanes, and parts are not bike lanes. So, if that is the case, that shouldn't be a bike lane there because it's the worst place to put a bike lane, because there, you have all the cars coming in, and if you restrict them in one side, now, I go there all the time and there's issues. When you go in, the car's supposed to take to the left, don't go to the left, they go straight, they keep going straight, there's no thing to go to the left, even though you're supposed to go, they're all trying to get to go down that road. So, if the city allows bike lanes to be interrupted and not being there, besides, we all adopted under suspension to remove it, why hasn't it been removed? It should have been removed. If we order it to be removed, should, if the council unanimously says, this is what we want you to do, then if it's not done, what is the purpose of a city council? There is no purpose of a city council. You can't get something that all of us combine, say, do it, and it's not done, then what do you elect us for? There is no need of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lopez.
Yes, we put in order for that to see if it was possible to take the bike lane out of there on Third Street from Broadway to Chestnut. The reason why is because from Pearl Street to Broadway, even though it's not marked in two lanes, people make it two lanes, but from Che, from Broadway to Chestnut, it's only one lane because of the bike lane. So, the traffic backup all the way to Park Street and Pearl Street, and I haven't, I've been there for a couple hours, I never seen a, a person riding a bike, it is crazy. We should move that, so the people in Chelsea get stuck in that traffic there, that backup to traffic, because they can't go over there and the other side, but it's only one lane. So, we need to remove that bike lane. It's just only one block from Broadway to Chestnut. If we remove that, we're gonna see the traffic moving better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the city manager provide an update to the city council on traffic configuration plans for the intersection of Congress Avenue, Park Street, and Pearl Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero. Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
For years, we've been asking, I haven't seen it, but we're supposed to see some kind of a, let me see, a study that was done from the city, from the federal government, some type of study to say the configuration, how everything works there, starting from the bottom of the Meridian Street Bridge all the way up there. That's when the former city manager was here, it was, they contracted it out, and I've been waiting all this time, I don't think any of us have ever seen it. I don't, I don't believe any of us have ever seen how that's gonna, how they're gonna do it, what, so I would like to know exactly, how they're gonna alleviate some of the traffic that's there, what they're gonna do, because it just keeps getting worse and worse, it doesn't get any better, it's getting worse and worse. So, I don't know how, what do we, what is, I wanna see, I want an answer exactly telling me, what are we gonna do? How do we intend to remedy the situation? Or if there's any way to remedy it, if there's not, there's not, but at least, we'd like to know how they're gonna see if they can help the people of our city, because they do need help to move up and down with their cars. They keep saying the city doesn't have any cars, but there's plenty cars, and there's more cars coming every day, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by counselors Lopez and Recupero. Order that the traffic and parking commission approve the installation of a speed bump at forty-two and forty-three Maverick Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
I would like to adopt under suspension, I would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Yeah, I've been getting complaints from people riding too fast on Maverick Street when they take the corner on Shama towards Maverick, and there's a lot of children playing bicycle, playing any kind of games there, like with the soccer or baseball, they, they play on the street. It's very dangerous that, when they drive so fast in that area, being so many children there, so that's the reason why I'm putting this.
Counsel Recupero.
Around that area, there's a school, and people just, they, they speed up, it's a one-way, and they just, vroom, they zoom, zoom right through, and it should have a little speed bump to protect the mothers that are walking with their children going down the street, you know, because they, they take them out of the school, the Shirley School's there, and they just walk down all around that area, so it's a be a precaution to help to make sure that nobody gets hit, because they always speed down that way, they speed all around that area, but let's see if we can put a sign, one of these speed bumps there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero, um, my apologies, Counselor Lopez. Order that the traffic and parking commission approve the installation of a speed bump at thirty-one Library Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
I would like to adopt under suspension, I also would like to speak about it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
I've been getting complaints also on Library Street about people speeding there, I don't know if you guys remember, a couple years back, I think a year and a half ago, someone got killed in a motorcycle on that street.
Yes.
I think was the speed was the, the reason, and the neighbors in that area complained that people have been driving too fast there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by counselors Lopez, Recupero, and Vito. Order that the city manager, parking clerk, police chief, and traffic and parking commission have parking enforcement officers in force and issue fines to illegally parked hitched and unhitched trailers parked overnight in Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
I would like to adopt under suspension also, and I would like to speak about it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
This is something I've been complaining a long time ago, also getting complaints from people who need the parking space in the city of Chelsea. There's a lot of construction company and business people that bring their trailers hitched to the, the trucks, and they park overnight, so they take a space from our residents, and I've been working with Jeanette about this, and I would like to be, you know, more enforcement of this, you know, not only parking enforcement overnight, but if a police officer go around and see something like that, to, to, you know, to give them a fine, because if you have business, pay a parking space somewhere where you can put your, your trailer. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
I agree with my fellow counselor, there's many little trailers hooked up to cars, and I don't know how they, how they get tickets, who gives them tickets? Do the parking enforcement people go at night after twelve o'clock and give them tickets? Or do the police give them tickets? I don't know how it is, so we would definitely like to know how, who tags these people, and I would at least like to see how many of these trailers are being tagged, if there is any. If there's a report, maybe parking and traffic can give us, and how many of these things are happening, the trailers that are being tagged, and who's tagging them? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have an order introduced by counselors Lopez, Recupero, and Vito. Order that the city manager and DPW commissioners send a crew to clean and sanitize the bottom of all published trash receptacles throughout Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
We would like to adopt that under suspension.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
I've been complaining about this for a long time. These receptables that are, are around the city, that belongs to the city. These receptables that are around the city, that belongs to the city. I know they get cleaned up every day, but on the bottom, it's a mess. We need to clean that up. What good it is that if we emptied the barrel from the trash there, from the, from the, but on the bottom, there's a lot of, lot of mess, a lot of trash. And I would like to see if, little by little, we're not going to do everything in one day, but to clean it up. If you go to Ballyham Square and you don't have to lift the plastic barrel, just see at the bottom, there's so much trash. It needs to be cleaned up, especially the downtown area, you know, where we have people that come into the city. And not only in the area of Ballyham Square, everywhere in the city, it's a mess. So, and all these barrels stink. So we need to either change it or clean it up. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
I agree with my fellow counselor and maybe there should be more sanitary to that, to clean them up a little more. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY '21, '22, and '23 were not paid and are owed to vendors. And to meet this obligation, funds are required.
Counsel Hattlerberg will serve a roll call on the adoption.
No.
No. This already wasn't, this is the second reading. We're just authorizing them to pay. Two readings? Two readings? All right. So Counsel Hattlerberg moves to a second reading.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Whereas the city owns space located at 212 Congress Avenue, documented as parcel ID 1352 when the city assesses maps and catalogued under book number 68561 and page 86 in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds.
Second reading. Seeing no objections, so move.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Whereas the city has for years recognized the dangers of unaddressed coastal flood vulnerability in the Island and River District due to the acute undeniable impacts of climate change. And whereas the city has therefore diligently secured grant funding and advanced the design of a flood barrier on the eastern side of Island and River. While continually harm.
We'll move to a second reading. Seeing no objections.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Whereas the city of Chelsea has a licensing ordinance restricting convenience stores and gas stations from being on the same parcel. And whereas the city council and planning board, with the support of the city administration in a recent zoning amendment eliminated the restriction of convenience stores and gas stations on one parcel. And whereas while the zoning amendment was ultimately passed and the restriction eliminated, the licensing ordinance restricting the practice remained and was never changed. And whereas this order will bring the city zoning ordinances into alignment with this licensing ordinances. Now therefore be it ordered that the city council deletes in its entirety Section 14-2 of Chapter 14, Article 1 of the city's Code of Ordinances.
Counsel Hattlerberg moves, we can roll call this ordinance. Yes, you have the floor.
So, super quick, guys, you know, one of my fellow counselors just said, we already did this, didn't we? Which we did, but we changed the zoning code. There was a, basically a ordinance underneath it that said the same thing. We are now deleting the ordinance so that the action works, basically.
I'd be voting against this, again, because the zoning coding has been changed and I'd like to get more information about where it's now overlapping. I know that, you know, folks are coming and they want to do gas stations and, you know, candy store, the convenience stores. And we have a lot of other places. We just have to be careful. I mean, we start opening up with development. I'd just like to be careful on this one here. Again, specifically, I'd like to know more about it. Thank you. I'll be voting no.
Counsel Recupero.
I believe this ordinance should be changed. Every place we go, we see gas stations and we see convenience stores all combined. You know, I don't know why we can't have it. If everybody else has it, I don't see why not. Many times, what it does is in this city, you have a monopoly with gas stations. You only got two of them. So they put this price as much as they want. So let's make a few more and maybe they will compete with gas and people will pay less. But I believe it's a good thing. I'm going to be voting for it because everywhere else has it. Why not? What is the difference?
Any other speakers on the matter? If not, the clerk will call a roll.
Counsel Brown.
No.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counselor Vito is absent. Counselor De Jesus is absent. Counselor Hattlerberg. Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Six in favor, ordinance is adopted. Finally, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Whereas the city, through the Department of Housing and Community Development, was awarded $400,000 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Park Grand Program for the renovation of Volk Park in FY '20. And whereas on November 25th, 2019, the Chelsea City Council.
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerberg. Seeing no objection, we move to a second reading.
That is all new business. You move on to public announcements.
Any public announcements? Counsel Brown.
Just want to let the folks know we'll be celebrating Veterans Weekend this weekend. It falls on a Saturday. So there's going to be events Thursday, Friday, Monday. It's a time that we go out and celebrate those who have, you know, served in the military in wartime, peacetime. But also, we give homage and love and respect to those who have also ultimately gave their life to of service in the military and also paid the ultimate price. So we thank them for their service. We don't forget, you know, our veterans and stuff. And we, I was at an event today, we had two Chelsea, well, one Chelsea resident, Olivia Walsh, being appointed to a council of veterans and Sandra, Reverend Sandra Whitley, also being appointed to a council by the governor and lieutenant governor. So it's great work that they are doing for the veterans here. We're here in Chelsea. We are supporting them under Secretary Santiago, John Santiago. There's a lot of great things that's going on, how to come back, some of the illnesses the veterans come back with, some of the job placements and getting them into places where they can live, up at the Soldiers' Home. If you haven't been up there, that place is like, wow. It's like, it's blossoming. It's the work, the commitment that we have here for our veterans because they have given their lives in serving. And also, many have given their lives and death for our freedom, our safety, and where we stand. And we have to be remiss, not remiss about what's going on around our world, where wars are still happening in our world. We are being affected by it. And so we show homage to our veterans this weekend. And please try to get to one of the events. They have one at the Soldiers' Home on Thursday. And we also have one here Friday at the Senior Center.
Counsel Lopez.
I was going to say the same thing about Chelsea's Old Home. We'll be celebrating Veterans Day on Thursday. And then Chelsea, the Senior Center at 10 a.m. Also, I would like to say I wish good luck to the city councils who are running and who have a contest tomorrow. It's going to be about three. I think that have some, some appointments and good luck. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero, work our way down.
I'd like to say good luck to all the city councilors, to all of us. And next year, we'll do a real, we'll try to do a real good job. Nobody's saying that we're going to do a good job, but we'll try. And also, we'd like to say thank you for Jessica. This will be our last city council meeting. She'll be leaving us. So thank you. And it was nice having you here. Hope to see you again in the future as a friend.
Counsel Taylor.
So I just want to remind everybody watching at home that tomorrow is Election Day. This is your duty. If you are registered to vote, please go out and vote. Even if your race isn't contested, go out and vote. We have an at-large counselor race. We need your political participation. So please, don't just leave it for other people. When you don't vote, you lose your right to complain. Thank you.
Actually, Chelsea's Veterans Day will be celebrated on Friday, starting at 10 o'clock at the Senior Center. We will have a guest speaker from the Police Department who served some time over in Afghanistan will be the keynote speaker. Would be nice to see this council body be there in support of our veterans, me being one. I appreciate you showing up. And actually, any moments of silence? Counsel Recupero.
Moment of silence for all the people that perished in Maine. One of them, I think, I don't remember his name, but I think one of them was from Chelsea. And that's one. And the other one is for all the people of Israel and all the people of Palestine that are dying. For, and I believe should be, this should end and people should be allowed to live, not die.
Yeah, that's true. There was a connection to Chelsea. It's Vassella, the electrician who lived down on Broadway, relation to him. Seeing no further business before this council are adjourned.